Row call.
Ron Granger.
Here.
Andy Schaefer.
Here.
Todd Thane.
Here.
Sean Morgan.
Here.
Tim Weber.
Here.
Hal Wren.
Here.
Robbie Ehlert.
Here.
Here. Kyle, would you do the invitation for us?
Sure.
Dear Heavenly Father, we're thankful for this day and thankful for the opportunity we have to be here as town council and citizens from the community and bless us and guide us in our decision making today when we say things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Lisa, would you lead us in the pledge?
Diligence to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number five, minutes of the meeting, discussion, actions to approve the town council minutes of February twenty fifth, twenty twenty five.
I make a motion to approve the town council minutes of February twenty fifth, twenty twenty five.
Second.
Motion made by Tim Weber, uh, seconded by Robbie Ehlert. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Uh, petitions and public input, besides, not counting the public hearing, anybody got anything to bring to the council besides that? Alright. Lisa, do we have any changes to the agenda?
No.
Okay. So it's seven oh two and we're supposed to have our public hearing at seven ten. Should we wait and go on? What do you think?
I don't think, unless you just want to start with some of the new business, because I think.
Go ahead.
This presentation will take longer, so.
Okay.
Do you want to do some of the new business and then we'll come back?
Okay, so we'll go ahead and do, go down to nine, ten, okay.
Sure. Yeah.
So let's jump down to nine. We'll do our public hearing at seven ten. So I guess it's eight minutes. Uh, committee and board meetings?
Have, have a meeting since last week.
Do what?
We haven't had a meeting since last week.
Okay. Uh, council reports. Anything from the council?
Uh, just a few things. I've sent in several opposition letters to several bills. I think I've sent seven a month to all the legislators. Uh, in opposition to the wolves, guns, ammunition, to workplace environment outside, to different things. I've gotten a few responses back. From legislators, um, thanking me and then some going on a two-page letter about the workplace environment where they want to legislate. And it's just new getting it passed house and it's getting sent, so they're going to be working on rewordings and stuff because of comments. But they want to legislate it down to temperature outside and how much time you spend out there and tell you exactly how you're supposed to do it. Even though we already have rules and laws in place, uh, they're just trying to twist things as much as they can, I believe. Uh, to really hamstring the industries in Colorado.
The Colorado Chamber is actually in opposition.
Exactly, right, so. Got responses back, so.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah.
Anything else from the council? Okay, supervisor reports.
We won't have any supervisor reports tonight. I can give you kind of ours from this morning. Um, Jeff has, one of his larger projects was a sign replacement because a lot of the signs are not the correct heights and so he probably almost has it cranked out because for lack of snow, he's got lots of time to do new things. So he's almost got that complete. We'll probably start working on some raw water lines to the east park by the museum. That'll be something we'll try and get completed this year too. Jeannie's been working on, um, we're almost finished with the rear, just a few more things they want to complete that and then we can put that up with community. And she's also just been working on more of the, um, changes on the web to make it ADA compliant. Um, Chloe's renovating the, uh, apartment that, um, we had go make it. It was a complete rehouse though, because that tenant had been in there for quite some time, so we're getting closer on that and have it rented as of now. Everybody's trying to just working into some of their capital projects, so hopefully have the trans orders, the maintainer will, is, should be finished here soon, so we'll get that and um, get some of those out of the way. We'll hopefully complete the, um, water project that we had at the tanks and that will be tied up and then we just have to wait a little bit to finish out after and on the sprinklers systems of some of the residents down there. Um, other than that, I was out for a little bit last week, so I don't have a whole lot to tell you about anything that I've been doing, so just been working on some interviews.
Anybody have questions?
I got one on the, uh, grants, the grant for the, um, um, boat launches, I believe. Is that the correct terminology for?
Yeah, they're not quite out to bid yet.
But they'll, well, March here, do we, when's that date?
Yes, they will. Well, I don't know what date she will have them.
Oh, so it's just finalizing things and then get it sent out. Then do we have to wait for approval on that, the grants?
Uh, no, she can go out to bid, but they'll, they'll, they have to do it in the fall when there's certain water levels.
Because they're already approved. Okay, that's the one, is when was that going to happen?
Yeah, yeah. And that's determined by.
Okay, okay. Very good, cool.
Those communities. Um.
It should be an interesting project.
Yeah, and just forgot to tell you, um, Maribel and Michael went over to present for the, um, tank, tanking and um, I got a very nice email from Dana and said that Michael hit it out of the park. It was the best presentation he has seen.
Good, good.
Be sure, give him some kudos for that.
Cool. Yeah, yeah.
Good. Anything else, anything that you, anything else you need to report to us on your report?
Um, not at this time, pardon.
Okay, we're at seven oh seven. Should we look, go ahead and have our public hearing? Okay, we're going to move back up to number eight, public hearing. Uh, aid, public hearing, liquor license authority, special event permit violations. We will, um, hear from the, from the people involved. I, I want to caution everybody, we're only talking about the, what the effect of the liquor license, nothing else that happened between, uh, the chamber and the college, but any, only with that concerns with the liquor license. Okay? So I guess we'll let Emma speak first.
Did you guys happen to get the letter we sent?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Did you happen to get the letters we sent?
Yes.
Okay. So, um, just in regards to that, to the unattended alcohol, we want to emphasize that while alcohol was inadvertently left in the locked room after the event, no unauthorized individuals accessed it. The room was secured and the harm the rule seeks to prevent unauthorized consumption did not occur. We were neither reckless nor negligent in our obligations as the venue was locked and inaccessible to the public. At the conclusion of the event, we unintentionally left a half-open can of alcohol and a tote containing approximately twenty unopened beer cans on the premises. This was an unintentional oversight on our part as we believed all alcoholic beverages had been properly removed and accounted for. Our team's intent was to comply fully with all liquor laws and license requirements, and we sincerely regret this mistake. Moving forward, we have implemented a stricter post-event alcohol removal procedure to ensure this does not happen again. This includes a designated team member responsible for performing a final alcohol sweep of the premises before closing. Additionally, we will provide further training to all event staff and volunteers regarding proper alcohol storage, handling, and removal. To the ID verification oversight, originally we had planned to use wristbands for age verification as we had in previous events. But due to time constraints, we were unable to implement this system. We acknowledge this oversight and regret that our initial plan was not implemented. That said, no one underage obtained alcohol and no minors were served alcohol. For the alcohol outside permitted area, we did not authorize alcohol to be taken outside the designated event space. To our knowledge, all, excuse me. All service and consumption remained within the permitted venue. If there were any inadvertent instances after the event, they were not sanctioned by event organizers. Furthermore, also, all servers were of legal drinking age and no minors had access to the alcohol. The NPS cadets that we recruited to serve alcohol must be at least twenty to twenty-one years old to be in the law enforcement program they are enrolled in. We're fully aware of this requirement, which is also publicly listed on their website, and also the reason why we request the NPS cadets to help for this event. Additionally, the event adhered to the permitted liquor license hours from four PM to eleven PM, with the last person being me leaving the premises at ten seventeen PM. These facts further demonstrate our commitment to responsible event management. We respectfully request that these clarifications be considered in reviewing this matter. We are committed to ensuring full compliance with all special event permit requirements and welcome any guidance to improve our processes in the future. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Okay. Does anyone have questions for Emma at this point? And we can come back to questions if we need to. Okay? Do we have others who would like to speak on either behalf of the chamber or, uh, for the things that happened that they know firsthand knowledge or whatever it might be? Anybody from the college?
Um, Mr. Granger, we're here.
Can you come up just?
Yeah, go ahead and step up.
Yeah, we're here just to, uh, you know, I was not there present, um, but the things that I heard, um, nothing really disturbing. We are asked every year to volunteer for this program or for this event. Um, in the past, we've been asked to volunteer for a lot of events, and I've whittled that down over the years because it frankly, it just gets abusive for our students. Yes, sir.
Could you, could you please tell us who you are?
Yeah, I'm Charles Heike. I'm sorry. I'm the director for the Park Ranger Law Enforcement Academy.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, sorry.
Sorry to interrupt.
I, I, I know Mr. Granger, so I assumed, uh, everybody knew me, but I, yeah, for the record, I'm Charles Heike. I'm the director. I've been there for about six years now. And prior to that, I was a federal agent, retired federal agent, so. But no, um, the, the only issue that I knew there was some concern over alcohol and, uh, who was it, Emma? Emma's correct that everyone has to be twenty-one to be certified. We do however allow people that are twenty to come into the program as long as they're going to turn twenty-one by the time they graduate. Um, but I don't think that's the case. Kathy, do we have any twenty-year-olds?
There was one, one-year-old, Mr.
Which one was he? I can't remember. Backed out? Yeah, so we do in fact have one that's twenty years of age, but I've been told that he was serving food only. Um, but I would like to say, and I know a few people here, but I would like to say, I'm not happy to be here. And I'm not, and, and in the future, we're not going to participate in this just because, um, it, it's just been, to me personally, every time we get asked, uh, for a long time, we weren't allowed to have tips. Okay? And so a couple of years ago, I said, look, these kids are here to train for a, a job and not to, uh, you know, be used for, in the past, we've been used to set up the rodeo, to work security. Um, there's a big problem with using my students to work security. They have no authority. They don't have any peace officer authority, and if they put hands on someone or did have to get in altercation with someone, they're going to face charges and they may be kicked out of the program. So I'm just not happy with the way our students have been, uh, used in the past, and so I'm just going to, uh, say in the future, we're not going to participate in any of these events.
Okay.
Um, and like I say, in the past, they weren't even allowed to have tips, but now there was some agreement on tips. I know there was some controversy on tips on this one also. Um, but no, I'm here to answer any questions anybody might have, but yes, we did allow that for this time.
But CNCC brought these allegations to us, so is there any clarification, anyone from CNCC wants to make on those?
Okay. And please introduce yourself.
My name is Angie Miller. I am the executive director of Human Resources for CNCC. I am here, uh, as a representative of the president's cabinet. She was unable to be here this evening. Expressed her, um, apologies that she could not be here. I did not see the alcohol in question. Um, Jennifer Barker, uh, who is our senior executive assistant, was the only one, uh, on our cabinet that did. Um, it was in a, the picture we saw was in a, uh, it was closed. The items in question were in a cooler. That was the only picture I saw. Uh, again, I, I don't have unfortunately any information beyond that, Lisa, I'm sorry.
I'm just saying, these were brought to us by CNCC.
I know.
So I assume that's why CNCC was here.
We were asked to be here, uh, on behalf of the president.
Okay. So is there any, anybody that from CNCC that has something that we can bring, bring to the council on this?
Or questions from here, can I?
Okay. And again, remember, we got to keep this to the alcohol, the liquor, so.
My name's Nick LaFever. I'm the facilities director for CNCC. Uh, I was there when we located the alcohol. So Monday morning, uh, there was a half-empty can left on a table. Uh, and we found the alcohol in the cooler, like she said, about twenty probably unopened beer.
It was a tote, it wasn't a cooler?
Yeah.
It was red office tote, you couldn't see in it, it was underneath red or totes. The picture just showed the car.
Yeah, go ahead and, Nick.
Um.
Was there access to the room?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that room is not ever fully locked. We try, but our students are very good at getting in.
So it's a fact that students did access the room?
I was told that the baseball team was in there Sunday morning. I've always also told that they were in there Saturday night to put away the tables. I don't know one way or the other, I wasn't there.
True.
I don't know if they helped you put away tables Saturday night.
I would like to have, um, the whole chamber staff that was there, um, it was Emma, myself, Ashley, Hannah, um, and then Cradle. We were all there while the baseball team was there putting everything away.
Okay.
The whole. That was very cool.
Okay. Anything else, Nick, or any questions for Nick? Okay.
Thank you.
So, so I, and I think that was my thing, Emma, when you said that, that it was in a secure, locked, secured room, was it just in the Colorado room?
Yeah, it was the floor that night. I went around, shut off all the lights, checked all the doors, made sure they were all closed and locked.
Okay. Okay, that, that's, I just wanted to make sure. I didn't know if there was a closet or something you put in or if it's just in the Colorado room, okay?
We put it off to the corner, so it was out of the way, um, just off in the side, not knowing that there was alcohol in those totes, but the remaining of the stuff that didn't fit in my car was off to the corner.
Okay. Guys.
So is that, did I hear you correctly? You didn't know that it was in there?
No, I didn't.
Okay.
No, we, we, uh, we cleaned up the rest of it. We were trying to get everything in the back of my car. Um, we thought we got everything because we had the the big horse troughs and the coolers. We got all of that stuff out there, um, there was lies that was in the tote, um, and our red tote.
Okay.
There was a couple totes on top of that that had decorations in it, so we just assumed that it was one of the decoration totes.
Okay.
And then the can that was on the table, it was next to a, an energy drink can too, and I just, just.
Any other questions from council to either Emma or anybody from CNCC that spoke?
A couple, um, the Michelob Ultra, was that a beer you guys were selling or do we know who that belonged to?
That was a beer we were selling.
That was a beer you were selling?
Yeah.
Okay, was that, was that an open can on the table? The Michelob Ultra?
The Tiki Rum Punch.
Got you. Okay, okay.
The Michelob were all closed in that red tote that was.
Great. Anything else?
Just one thing for Mr. Chuck. I can't remember your last name all the time. I, I don't want to butcher it.
Oh, no, bro, hi.
Side note, if, if somebody were to come to you and say, hey, if you guys volunteering, we make a donation to your program, would you help? Like if I come and said, would you do this for a thousand dollars for your program?
Are you, you're bribing me now? No, no, I'm just kidding. No, really, uh, I've got a long history. I, Ron Granger is the one that hired me, okay? So I go back a little bit. And no, what, what, I didn't mean to come across as, uh, we're not willing to help out on anything else, but I just, I have to protect my students. And we, you ever heard of the saying, no good deed goes unpunished?
Right.
So I, I think there was some frustration with the students that I got feedback, you know, they, they didn't get to eat or they, you know, they thought they were going to get a meal, they, nobody. I, I think it was just mismanagement the whole night, um, and, and I think that kind of sums it up.
So this is my, and really what I was trying to get at is this, the final straw that, that breaks the back of this, that you are no longer putting these, uh, young men and women out there, uh, because this is what happens when you volunteer for.
Well, yeah, I, I don't want them to be caught up in a controversy when I started hearing about alcohol and maybe alcohol violations and all that. They don't need this. They, they're, they're, they're getting ready to go, uh, to work in some type of a law enforcement job. We have Rio Blanco County deputies. We have Rainsley police officers that have gone through this academy, and so they are held to a little bit of higher standard. So I don't want them involved in a risky, uh, situation and I, I, I wouldn't say this is risky, but here I am, you know, and I just, I'm here to defend them and say, you know, make sure that we didn't do anything wrong.
They are, they did an excellent job.
Thank you.
Right, 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 that's correct.
Thank you, thank you.
It's an, it's, it's an unfortunate event all the way around.
Yeah.
And you always hate to see things that are good, like you said.
Right.
That kind of turn bad.
Right.
And, and I, you know, the seriousness of this, because we're, you know, being a town council member, when I, uh, put my name in the hat to do this, I didn't realize I was going to have to be a commissioner over alcohol.
Yeah.
And it, it, these types of things are always tough to muddle through because you get a lot of he said, she said type of things.
Right.
And it's our responsible, responsibility in the future just to make sure these things don't happen again. And it's unfortunate. I mean, dude, honestly, these are things that have happened and they do happen. You just got to figure out how to muddle through them and, and make sure everybody understands what needs to happen. But again, you know, thank you in the college for helping out because you guys were, you showed, like Emma said.
Sure.
They did a great job, but you know, unfortunately, when you're a volunteer, a lot of times you don't get the thank yous you think you're going to get.
Yeah.
And that's volunteer.
Yeah, yeah, and I, I, yeah, that, that's the only thing, I just want to make.
But thanks for your, thank you for your comments.
Yeah, no problem. And if, uh, you know, I just want to make sure that they're good and, uh, we're good and that's why I'm, why I'm here and, uh.
Very good.
Uh, so, um.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Thanks, Jack. I'm going to exit stage right.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody from council have any questions for anybody that spoke?
I just have a question for, for Emma. There are a couple of things that you mentioned, uh, because of the lack of oversight or like you're going to implement a sweeper and then training and wristbands.
Yeah.
So with the next event, are those things that you're going to implement or?
Yeah, so we will have, um, uh, we're going to call him a liquor czar, um, and have the one person just specifically for all of the liquor licensing and making sure everything um, is, uh, within regulations, within laws and all that stuff. So we, um, we realized that we kind of spread ourselves a little bit too thin that night and, um, we need more, um, people on deck and just one specifically for that, um, being how serious it is. Um, and then just making sure that, um, we have that person go through and sweep the room, everything, make sure that nothing is left behind. Um, and then, um, we will continue to do the, the wristband implementation. It works out very well for like Oktoberfest. Um, it just cuts down on, um, having the servers have to ID everybody. You, you, you know, are able to get your wristband when you come into the event, and that was just something we, honestly, I just ran out of time, um, and I was, I was in my car getting dressed, um, you know, just late and trying to, trying to do it all, um.
So I don't, I'm not real familiar with all the liquor, liquor laws, but did you guys ID everybody that, that were getting alcohol? Was everybody IDed at the event?
As far as I know, they were getting ID'd, yes. That no minor was served, um, everybody was over age. Um, I mean, obviously, if they know of the person, they don't always ask for the ID because they know they're over age and know that, um, but as far as I knew, they were.
But in Colorado, you have to ID everybody, correct? Is that correct or?
I don't, I don't know.
Ashley?
Ashley, Taryn, uh, I think I know all of you, but, um, I own, I was the owner of Coach's Corner. And so I've been through kind of all of the liquor licensing and, and making sure that things are taken care of in the right way. Um, a couple of things that I wanted to point out, um, a point that was brought up earlier, kind of at length, was the fact, um, of us talking about how the NPS cadets need to be twenty-one. You only have to be eighteen to serve alcohol in the state of Colorado, like to physically, to physically serve it. So I just wanted to make that a point of clarification there.
Special events, though, you have to be monitored by someone that's twenty-one.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. Yes, you, yes, there's always the supervision of someone that's over twenty-one, um, but in terms of like providing the alcohol is kind of where I was going with that. Um, and then, what was the question about?
Um, IDing every single person.
Oh, IDing every single person. So my understanding of that part of the law is that it's a, a way to, to ensure that no minors are being served, right? And so the error could have been like in the process of IDing every single person, whether you knew them or didn't, and providing that wristband. Um, but again, none of, there were no minors that were served, which is what that law is made to protect against, if that makes sense.
Good.
I'm just speaking for myself, not the, the whole council, but I guess my, my thought is, is how do we prevent it from happening again? It sounds like you're addressing those, those concerns.
Yeah, definitely. Just being super diligent, you know, with that process and what that looks like and just making sure that that is communicated in a way that everybody can understand and, uh, just ensuring that it happens with, with that supervision and with, you know, holding them accountable to that and holding ourselves accountable to that.
And once we were aware of what happened, we jumped right into fixing that, um, to addressing the concerns. We, we met with our board right away. Um, we met with the college that, the week, the week after that Friday, um, to address their concerns as well. Um, we're not, we're not shying away from this. We know that we messed up, um, and we are, we are accountable for that. That's on us. Um, so we're just trying to make sure that it's not missed ever again, um, and this is a hard lesson learned and we apologize.
Thanks.
I want to say a few, a couple of questions. Um, I have no, no doubt this was unintentional, and I'm a little shocked the college isn't more represented here tonight with the allegations because they're pretty serious. Um, but also the college wrote a really strong supportive letter for the alcohol to be served at the special, for the special event, the Crab Crack, and as well, you presented a certificate of fact of good standing as well. That the Chamber of Commerce was formed in nineteen sixty-six, and I just, I just, I feel you guys feel this is serious enough, but like these letters could be in severe jeopardy just because an oversight of a few beers left in a cooler, so.
We know, trust me, we, we know. We, um, I've had several, several breakdowns over this.
And if, as, as far as us being the commissioners for the alcohol, as Mr. Weber pointed out, the state can take that from us, so. Which issues all the special permits then have to go through the state, which you want to talk about complicate the simple situation, so. Anyways, I, I appreciate the ownership. You guys are demonstrating in the mess up tonight, and I do, again, I, I wish the college was here to, to face the, to answer questions about the accusation more, more formal than.
I'm happy to try to answer.
Well. Respect, I really appreciate that, but respectfully admitted yourself that you weren't involved with it, so.
Right, may I add to what yours?
Please, please, I'm done. I just wanted to emphasize how important this is. It's not something we need to, it's not something that can be lackadaisical.
Right.
It's, it's, if heaven forbid, one of those college kids got into that cooler and wrapped their car around a light pole, that would, I mean, it's not impossible that that could happen. That's, that's a real thing there. I mean, let's not pretend that kids don't see alcohol and lose their minds about it, so I just wanted to state that.
And I, I agree with Todd. I mean, I, these are all, they're honest mistakes that happened. They should have never happened. So we're, we're, we're counting on a pickle here and we're, the rubber really meets the road on all the. So we're, we're, we're counting on a pickle here, and where the rubber really meets the road on all this is that, and I wish Ty, our police chief, was here tonight, as well as whoever the college was addressing this. Because we have a very strong worded letter from, or a memo from our police chief, uh, regarding these violations. And it's like, wow, wait a minute, what's the right thing to do here? Uh, cause I have some questions for him as well, in order for me to ask the right questions to you guys, and how we make a decision of what we should do. I, I, I just don't know how else to put it.
The allegations came from CNCC, they were very harassed, and I am disappointed too, that you guys from CNCC didn't have someone here to say what they felt was in error. Because those came directly from the college, and Jennifer Parker. And we have a, but I didn't bring it, because I was told that CNCC would be here to address their concerns.
Kind of a few things that we recall, if that would make, if that would, I'm happy to.
I, you know, and I appreciate that, and, but I would rather have it come from the source, and have our police chief here to talk about the direct response we have from him, him as well, cause it's very stern. We written to the council as the commission.
I wanna hear, I wanna hear if she's got facts for you.
Okay.
So Angie, if you want, if you have something, please.
Fair enough.
So I was in the room when, when Dr. Jones was told about this and got the photo. It, it, it definitely did raise a lot of questions, there were a lot of concerns, there were a lot of initial things done. There were some very real concerns that our students had access to the building, um, that our students had access to the open con, uh, we thought it was a cooler, again, the photo was from the top, only saw the one photo. I was not in the room, Nick was in the room, he's the one who actually saw the container with the alcohol in it, which was sealed. Um, I, I, again, know the conversation between the president and Ms. Barker and the town. I was not present for that, I'm, I'm very sorry, I can't lend more to any of that. The concerns, however, were legitimately stated, there was real concern that there was, our students had access, that was the biggest one. That our students had access to that very specific, uh, cooler or room, um, more than one group of students. We didn't really know who at first, we have access to some cameras, but just the way they're situated didn't really show much. So again, it was just more of that very real concern, as well as, um, yeah, that's it, as far as the alcohol is concerned, everything else was being handled between the, the chamber and, and the college, I believe. And I'm, and I don't really know where that ended. Nick, is there anything you feel you could lend on, okay. I, I'm very sorry that we don't have more.
No, that's fine, we appreciate.
No, no, because.
No, no, and I, I, it just.
Right, cause our issue is the alcohol alone, and this could all just be remedied if it would have been just cleaned up right away.
Yeah, and Angie, I love putting you on the spot, so I, I.
Right.
Emma, I have, I have one question for you, and it, and I'm, I don't want you to think I'm coming at you, but you said that no minors were served, how would you know that if you didn't ID or if you didn't have them have bracelets or? How would you know that minors weren't served? Or is it just that you believe that they probably weren't? Or CJ or anybody? Okay, and, and that's what I'm asking, cause I, we don't have that answer.
And, uh, you know, there was a lot of, a lot of community members there, um, even, you know, Officer Johnson was there in uniform too, um, you know, I, yeah, I.
Okay.
I would love to say real quick, um, that you hadn't met.
Hey, Grayden, please.
My name's Jessica Levas, and, um, I'm the president of the chamber. And, um, there was an email that she has, um, that she can provide, that she had reached out to Kathy beforehand, um, days prior to this event, to make sure, um, who was at the bar and to run down all the rules and everything that we expected for the night. Um, I feel like they did a fantastic job following through all of that, and I feel very confident in their work that night that they provided.
And then that's why I was asking, cause we didn't have any of that information as far as.
We knew exactly who the bartenders were, um, since like January twenty-seventh, a month ahead. Um, we knew what to expect, and we provided them with that stuff.
To be, to be clear, nobody is contesting that that alcohol was left in the building and that a partial bottle was left on the table, right? Nobody's contesting those allegations.
No, they definitely was, we, we acknowledge that.
Thank you. Good. Anybody else have anything, or anybody from the council, any questions?
Um, I, I would like to add, in the meeting with, uh, Dr. Jones, um, we did kind of an agreement that, uh, for possibly next year, that, um, as long as we had an outside source, say like Platte Public or anything that would bartend for us, she would still, um, she would still allow us to do the whole post event.
But they would be responsible for it, you know, initially, maybe they did in, doing it out, doing the sweep, all of that things. And then we would just do one final sweep at the end of that event.
Okay.
I just did a quick Google search, anybody under the age of fifty has to be ID'd or appears under the age of fifty.
Okay. Um, at our next, um, event, we will absolutely make sure, especially, um, with the Crab Crack, being such a large event, uh, we will make sure that whoever is at that bar, not only that, um, at the beginning table, when you check into the event. Um, we could even card there if needed, just to make sure that that wristband before they even enter the event gets on their wrist.
How many events do you guys have within Ransley in a year?
Um, a lot.
Mary Bell, how many licenses do they apply for? Special events.
For permits?
For alcohol permits?
Yes, yes.
Uh, Crab Crack, or Oktoberfest, and or mystery.
So four.
Oh, we'll have Rockables, um, that's, that's right, to the chamber, so there would be five this year, that would be out to get, uh, uh, those happy kids, or was that the else? The elves did, uh, what do you know?
Well, we had them do it, yeah.
Six then?
Six.
Total.
Okay.
Keep counting.
All right.
Right.
Say your final answer.
Yes, sir.
All right, any other questions? Thank you guys so much for coming and talking to us, we, we aren't going to make any kind of decision or anything tonight. Uh, but, uh, and if we have questions, we'll reach out, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you for your time.
Thank all of you who came, uh, to listen for about this and all this, we appreciate it, so. Okay, eight B, first reading of ordinance seven oh four, twenty twenty-five, amending municipal code fifteen point five zero. Historical structure preservation.
So, um, or become a certified local government, they still wanted a little bit more coverage in that particular municipal code, so the items in that ordinance are just making further corrections to the existing municipal code on historical structures.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, let me see, we did committee, council, supervisor reports, so I guess we're to old business, aren't we? All right, old business, discussion and action to approve the funds budgeted for Wolf Creek Reservoir in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars to be released to Rio Blanco Water Con, Conservation, I'm sorry, Conservancy District on March fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, during the AP check run. I know that we tabled this last time, didn't we?
Thank you.
Yes.
Mary Bell, are you gonna be pulling it up on the screens?
Yes, sir, give me a quick second.
I will, mayor, plan permission to come up in this area.
Yes.
Think you've seen me in the past kinda roam around and use monitors, so thank you very much. Some of this stuff you've already seen, um, let me just back up, Alden Van Eden, Rio Blanco Water Conservancy District, uh, District Manager, so. Um, you've seen some of this last year in October, I believe, um, is when I visited with you, so I have, some of these are repeat slides. I'm gonna go through some of these fairly quickly, uh, since some of this stuff is fairly fresh, hopefully fresh with you, but I got a few things that I wanna dive into a little bit more to kinda tell you what, what we're working on right now. Cause the thing, we've actually never, or that we quit moving forward, no. With all these federal agencies that I'm working with right now, with totals, seven, it's gonna grow to about twelve. This is a very complicated task that I've been, toward to do for the benefit of our community and our district. And I take this very seriously, because it's more than just a job, it's a lifestyle, it's really become that. So I wanna emphasize here, our mission statement, develop land and water resources within our district boundaries for the benefit of our district. That's what we do, next slide. And in our district, thing I wanna point out, you know most of the history of it, we are a run-of-the-river project at Taylor Drawdown. What comes in, goes out, that means there's no storage. The only storage I have is for the nature fish, and I have to have special per, permissions from the US Fish Wildlife Service and CPW to do any release for the fish. It's sad that the fish are ahead of you, Todd, I understand it, but I don't agree with it. So as we move forward, this is our district boundary. Kenny Reservoir is right here, the proposed project I'm talking about is right up here on the Moffett County line in the far northeast corner of our district. So that project can supply the vast majority of water in our district to the Utah State Line, can provide benefit to our water users. It also can serve some water users upriver via exchange. This area we've looked at, it's jurisdiction of us and our neighboring Water Conservancy District, Yellow Jacket, and there's very, very minimal water usage out there, some, and they've contacted us wanting water service already. So we know Kenny Reservoir is getting smaller, you can see that, and I added this into there, cause that's a question that I seem to always miss. I keep going on to Wolf Creek, rather than, well, Kenny Reservoir's gonna get smaller. In reality, what you're gonna see is the White River, Taylor Drawdown, and the White River. Kenny Reservoir just ain't gonna be there anymore, it's gonna be a very, very small pool, very small. So over time, this is gonna keep, keep filling in with sediment, but the purpose of Taylor Drawdown will absolutely have the ability to stay there. Key purposes for Taylor Drawdown was flood control for Ransley, pretty obvious here, and I got some photos at the very end here, and some excerpts from folks on social media that they remember the, the rockets coming in, people crawling out there with dynamite. I've had those personal conversations with the individuals that were crawling on those ice jams. So Kenny's gonna stay, or Kenny's gonna go, Taylor Drawdown will be there, so we'll still have flood control, recreation, it's just not gonna be the recreation you're used to today.
It'll come back.
Thank you for your confidence, and hydropower, that project was developed to have flood, flood control, but hydropower as a benefit, and some recreation all the way up, no matter what, with all these wetlands that we have up in here, that will still be some benefit to some folks. And there'll be some fishing. So in my board, has no intentions of giving up anything associated with Taylor Drawdown, that would be devastating to all the water users downstream of there with the flooding problem. Cause since that project's been constructed, there's been no flooding. What's, what's the estimated life of the rest of the lake, how long before the river meets the dam? Todd, that's a very tough question to answer, all I can tell you is we lose about two hundred acre feet a year in surface acres. For two hundred acre feet of storage, so you can take that, two hundred divided by there, and then you're gonna use years, you know, for the storage capacity. But in reality, this is just a fat spot in the river, cause there's no water stored there. The primary reason again, and that's why we did, we were set up with hydropower, was to pay for that project with hydropower. And keep your mill levy low, our mill levies of, is point zero six, is very, very small, just over half a million.
So you say the hydro will still work even with that, okay.
We're in the midst of refurbishing that right now for the next thirty-plus years. Hopefully, the next run goes about fifty, cause they're designed to go for sixty.
I hope I'm not here in sixty.
Sorry?
Said, I hope I'm not here in sixty.
Yeah, so, yep, we're absolutely gonna keep that, cause the outlet works for this, is on the bottom of Kenny Reservoir. So we bypass as much flow that we're permitted to and capable to, but we've got limitations of what we can do in there. We've also looked at dredging it, but since there's no storage in there, and FERC was very critical in all that, in a very nasty email, um, that there's no value to dredging it, since it is a FERC regulated project. Even if it, we lose FERC res, um, designation at FERC license, we're still not gonna change the way that operates.
So they're saying that soil that's sedimented in there isn't any good for anything?
Oh, it's good for stuff, but you can't touch it.
Right, so why, why can't we circumvent that, you can't touch it and dredge it and make money off of it?
Environmental flows, environmental for the fish, cause I have huge requirements with that, and also the beautiful wetlands, you can't touch a wet.
Is that the pipe minerals?
Yes, sir.
So I don't know how they can justify, maybe this is just a stupid question or comment, but I don't know how they can justify a wetland in the High Plains Desert.
Well, they do, even if it's man-made.
I know, but it, it doesn't make sense, we're in the desert.
I'm, we may.
Let's grow palm trees, then.
We may, yeah.
Does anything that does make sense?
We have to abide by, since we wanted that project to save us from flooding as well, so. And presently, we're under two hundred surface acres right now, I got one eighty-five on the latest, uh, GIS data that I got, so, next slide, please. This is kinda new, this plan that I shared with access from sixty-four and from Highway forty, none of this has changed inside the last business with you, not one thing. What has changed is through our reviews and conversations with the Army Corps, EPA, and DLM, and now USDA, we've looked at drought resiliency, but you can't, that's too broad to say drought resiliency, you have to have a narrow balance of municipal, flat water recreation, agriculture, and we're throwing hydropower back in there right now for the time being. Because our district is definitely into hydropower, and that's what we, we've actually got an enterprise, we, we're in business to produce electricity. And that's part of what falls underwater Conservancy Districts too, so. But these are the four that we're really trying to focus in now, and tomorrow, when I sit on the phone with you with all these stats, we're gonna talk about that. But the other benefits that we have, and I see I left hydropower in here, is in and out of basic treatment augmentation, Colorado River Compact, we're all kind of aware of that, I'm sure. But I can't talk about that, that's a swear word, I get scolded by the state and the feds. But yet I got a plan for it, but I can't talk about it. Environmental flows, the fish, yep, we're gonna have to do something for environmental flows out of this project into the river, so we make sure that that fish has adequate water supply, I understand that. Rural economic development, I can't use that as a purpose and need, you need water to supply your economy in town here, but I can't say that. I can't say that that's water is economic development, can't say that, that's not a need. But I put it in there anyway, because that's what you're gonna see as a strong secondary benefit from it. Hence why I put it up there. And we're still looking at building up to sixty-seven thousand acre feet, that hasn't changed. We're just constrained, cause they won't let us go anymore. Next slide, please, Mary Bell. Thank you. This should actually extend back further to two thousand and eight, because actually I haven't actually go back further yet. Our district started working on this back before two thousand and seven, when I came to the Reservoir, two thousand and eight. They've been at this for a very long time, knowing that they had some water supply, that they're gonna need to replace. It's a very long, arduous process, so through all this, we're looking at here is what we did last year. We worked with Army Corps on the purpose and need, funding, and environmental reports. I'm happy to say that out in the field, we've got to do, at Wolf Creek, we gotta study the bugs and the birds, and the, the lizards, the plants, everything out in soils, the cultural, aleo, those are all done, all those studies have been completed. They're right now in draft mode, our, our, our third-party contractor is doing that, our permit for us has those completed, nearly completed. And we have yet to find anything that's a fail flaw.
And that's what I was gonna ask, have they seen any red flags?
We've got some cultural stuff out there that's quite interesting. Now, if you go back to the, I'll, I'll go back to the map. Cultural as in artifact stuff or? Artifacts, maybe a campsite, they won't tell me, but I got a plan around it, they won't tell me where. So I can do avoidance, mitigation, or compensation, those are my three options. But they won't tell me in that whole area, if there's a bone laying there, or a license plate, or a fender, a muffler, that's all cultural to them. But I have to plan around it, but they won't tell me what I have to plan around and where it's at.
Why not?
It's confidential, because it's tribal.
It's what?
It's tribal. With the U D A tribes.
So is the SWCA, what's that acronym?
I'm sorry, thank you. SWICA, I'm sorry, I don't know what the acronym stands for.
But what do they do?
They're a third-party NEPA, National Environmental Policy Act contract.
Do they work for you?
They work for BLM, and we pay for them.
So on the seven agencies that you mentioned that you're meeting with, is BLM your biggest obstacle?
No.
Who is?
Army Corps.
Are they listed in this, uh, thing, this update that we got?
Army Corps is right here.
I know.
On that piece and on the, the work plan?
Well, I see, okay, so the Army Corps is the USA CE.
US Army Corps of Engineers, I'm sorry.
Okay, no, and I'm just trying to figure out some acronyms here because.
No worries.
You got the State Historical Reservation here, and I've got something highlighted under your third bullet point on the current effort. We're about midway through the, the paragraph. It says the BLM had been waiting to see how the project was progressing before making a decision. And how to proceed with the various water models. So are the water models the pod V one and the pod V two and project components that are on hold?
No, the water model is actually underway right now.
Who's doing the water?
We hired our own independent contractor as well, okay?
So where are they doing this water modeling at?
In Denver. Water modeling is done where they go on the computer. They grab all the data off the computer that's out there on how much water you use. And what the hydrology is, what the stream flows are. And I'll get to that here a little bit, and they pump that all into a, a computer model, and then they run the model to see how the river reacts. And then they also true it up by based upon real actual values taken within date, time, at USGS gauging stations.
So, because where I'm getting confused in that, I probably know something more than other people do is that. I know that like the Rackin Park District has been approached to do water measurement devices. Uh, down at Camp Park basically, in our little dam that Mr. Striegel built for us. Do you guys have anything to do with that?
No.
Okay.
I have no idea what that's going to ask.
What, Mr. Cox?
Rakers have been asked to do that for years now, so. You have to justify your acre feet because basically they want to resell. It's a bit vicious cycle, so you want to run your pump and irrigate your land as much as you can, especially if you have a senior right. And you have to measure that and prove that you're using it. It's probably no different for, in your case, Tim, is that you probably put a plumber or something.
Well, no, but they're not testing how much they use. They're doing a new model of, they're trying to find the best case scenario on how to measure water. And they got some types of grants.
Would that be through the base around table?
Mario from the college.
There you go, yes.
And a gentleman from me.
Yes, sir. Walt Proctor. Now I know what you're talking about. That's through the base roundtable, they actually do a demonstration plot.
Does that help you guys?
No, no. That's really to, to help Colorado enforcement, is what those measuring devices do.
Oh, man. I'll tell you what. I might, this, just sorry to make this comment, but this just makes my snow tax even more fun. Sorry to interrupt you and sidetrack this. Uh, go back to your.
But you got a question to answer.
I did, I did, thank you.
Just as a note, it took seven months for Army Corps of Engineers to review the bow wrap, so if you look at this size of project.
Well, that's what I'm trying to. That's why I'm trying to wrap my head around, because I got questions further down the presentation.
Okay, I'm, I'm, thank you for the interaction, Tim. I welcome that, so. So funding, last year we secured river district funding, three or five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. You got five million?
Back, back to the Indian plot or whatever. So could, could that shut, shut a project down?
No, I would have already made, made aware of that. It's something that we can mitigate. It might be a full-blown excavation, archaeological dig. We don't know. The BLM, the feds only talk to the tribes. I'm not allowed to.
Probably smell bones out here.
So they will talk to, to the tribes, and the tribes will give them direction that will come down to me.
Gotcha. Okay.
So, yeah. What I know is, I wish I knew. I bet Rockhounds asked me. And then I already talked about the, the, the environmental reports, so. Right now, in twenty twenty-five, we, we submitted to the Army Corps early twenty twenty-four our purpose and need and a proposed work plan. And those needs are what I just talked about, hydropower, municipal agriculture, things like that. They had to come in on everything. It took them twelve months, and I did that in January of last year, and I'm sitting here yet today. And I'm going to be on the phone again with them to talk in purpose and need. Other projects that I've talked about, they've done their purpose and need at least twenty times. I think I'm on number eight. I'm hoping that's not a trend of what's to come, or a sign of what's to come, because it's, it's very frustrating to deal with, with those folks, so. Um, and then while we're doing that, and because we're going to, we got to update a lot of this information, like economics, things like that, I'll go into that a little bit more detail. But we're doing a fifty-year vision right now too. So all the planning we're doing is for fifty years. So when any water users are looking at doing some planning, boy, now's the time to do it, because we need to know this stuff. And it'll help you make your job easier for your community down the road, because you don't want to go through this. You really don't, so. And the next slide, please, Maryville. And this is what we got to update. The direct spending, the mil- the, the, what we're going to get out of there. That's the economic piece that I'm not supposed to be able to use. But that's what I have to show up to make sure that everything's cost-effective and it pays out. But I also got to figure out Ransley's needs, and I'm going to the work plan more specifically that we shared with you on the next slide. So that's where I'm not going to spend a lot of time here, but all this, as a, the dollars for direct spending. Number of employees that provide for the product for the county, the, the sales tax revenues, that all gets updated again. So that's a couple of years old. Army Corps demands that you have very current information, so you got to update that. Even all the modeling, the hydrology. So we have to bring that all up in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty-five.
I've got a couple of questions here, Alden. Are these just, I mean, how, how are these numbers? Let me start over. So you're, you're asking for the town of Ransley for two hundred thousand dollars, right? For this year? And I think we went through this last time, but. With this five-year plan, it says the direct spending in Ransley will be three point five three million? Is that what you're saying?
That's correct. In direct spending. I believe that's per year. Doesn't say that, not year ten.
Oh, year ten. So in ten years, no, that's not right, that's every year. So each year up until year ten, we would spend, we would, um, the direct spend in Ransley would be three point five three million, right?
There'd be new cash coming into town.
And how?
Through businesses, motels, fuel. Um, maybe some auto parts, camper trailer parts, I. Recreation development, maybe a new farm store, irrigation store, somebody selling partial flumes. I don't know, maybe irrigation pumps, things of that nature. This is not just at Wolf Creek, okay? And even the jobs there aren't just at Wolf Creek. The district will only have a handful of people out there, like four, I mean, four people, I'm guessing. Otherwise, all the other jobs are secondary jobs, secondary market jobs.
So you're sec- so you're saying this employment on your, on your third line down, your employment. In the first ten years, it would increase the employment in Ransley by eighty-three jobs?
New, new employment, yes.
And, and where does that figure, where do you, I mean, I know you said a bunch of these things, but. I, I just don't know, you know, with the traffic coming from Grand Junction. You take a ride on Highway one thirty or Highway sixty-four. And then the Utah stuff, they're going to be coming down Highway forty.
I, I know, main entrance is going to be off of sixty-four.
I just. That's only part of it that, that I want to know is, yeah, we give you two hundred thousand dollars of taxpayer money. Then. These numbers that you're giving us, I don't see them. I don't see eighty-three extra jobs for somebody that turns the corner and goes right. I don't see where. You know, they, they could come into town, fill up with a tank of gas, maybe buy a drink or two from the liquor store, but I'm just wondering. How these numbers came about that, you know, in thirty years down the road, there's going to be an extra hundred and forty-nine jobs?
I'll share with you the economic analysis if you would like. This is just a summary page. That's all that is. And I can, I can share the economic analysis report that, that we had Army Economics do.
Does, does the econo- is that post? Post, as soon as the lake's complete?
That's post-construction, yes, sir.
So the, the ten, the year ten thing starts when the dam's full?
Yes.
Okay. Projected.
Yes. So those values are actually, when I visit with Army Economics, they tell me these values are all going to inflate.
So you're saying that you would have four employees, right? That's after you're all said and done, you'd have four employees, right?
That's, I just, yes, that's all that is.
And, and what do you take into consideration about getting people from Highway sixty-four and one thirty-nine? How do you think that they're going to get over here and then back out? Or how, how is that economy going to come back through Ransley?
Well, we don't provide full services out there for, for everyone. I mean, they're like a motel, there won't be a restaurant, there won't be fuel services. People will have to come back into town if that's what they want. People likely won't come here just for, for a night and go back to town, go back home. They're going to spend a night in town. And with that, you'll have more people come here to recreate with flatwater recreation or even paddleboarder, or whatever your kayak. Now you've got an opportunity for a new market.
And how many, so saying that, then you're going to put up your, your recreation part is also to put up campsites out there?
Yes.
Right?
Very primitive camping.
Similar, similar to what's at the lake?
That's right.
All right, go ahead. I would like that study, yes.
Happy to send it to you.
I would love to have it.
Okay, happy to send it to you. Not a problem.
I'd like to see it as well.
I'll just send it to you, and then you can share it with you all.
Perfect, thank you.
Not a problem. And then this is all part of what we're going to be updating. These numbers are all going to be updated. But you'll be able to kind of get an idea on what they're talking about, so.
Do they have any, I mean, is this just people sit in Denver again with the hydraulic model, just punching numbers in?
No, these are people that are on the phone with, with CPW, with the state of Utah. Um, and they come out here and they do interviews with people. I'm going to talk about what we're going to do, because we have a host of people. No, but they interviewed Peter Brixius, they interviewed me, they interviewed Tim Weber several years ago.
Really?
They interviewed a host of people.
I got like a million dollars for it.
Yeah, right.
Just kidding.
No, but they do come out here, and then they, then they talk to, like, we look at other projects of similar nature like Ridgeway, Elkhead Reservoir. Um, and, and what does Elkhead Reservoir provide to the economy? What does that provide?
That a question?
No, but those are questions that they ask when, when we interview these folks.
I don't know, don't look there.
No, I'm not posing to you, but those are the questions that they ask. What does it provide? Help me understand. What does it bring for your industry? Because right now, you've got an industry trying to grow upriver here. They can't grow because they've got a junior water. And they got a bunch of wells to poke. And they're going, what are we going to do? Whether they come on here or whatever, but those are things that you have the possibility of. If you don't have the water, you're not going to have economic growth. Because you don't have any water to grow. May I continue? Yeah, yeah, next slide, please. I'm going to dive into what we're actually going to be doing for Ransley. Fifty-year planning period, historical uses and trends. That includes the booms and the busts. And a boom will happen again. How big, I don't know. But I don't see this resource not getting used at some point in the next fifty years. Somebody's going to come back and say, I need more natural gas or something. I don't know. Population growth projections, that's all over the map. When I came out here, they said we were going to be thirty thousand people. I'm like. Where did that go? Conservation activities. You already have a conservation plan, but they're going to make sure that Ransley is using their water wisely. And Army Corps and all the federal agencies will review this. I don't like it. But that's what we got to do if we want a firm water supply. Economic prospects. So when we talk to some of your industry, we'll be sitting down with Connor of Ransley and your staff, kind of get, gather a lot of this information. Concerns on what Ransley has for their future water supply. We're going to go through infrastructure, conservation plans. Again, I see I doubled up on that. But are there other plans you have to do? Waterline replacement is part of conservation. Things like that. Putting the cemetery or the museum on raw water, that's conservation, because it's not using all the water. And available water rights. I'm not supposed to talk about water rights to the feds, but yet they're making me ask this question. Can't talk about it, but we're going to learn. So understanding their rationale doesn't make sense. Water modeling. Talking about that again, that is a big, big piece with BLM of what they want to get done, and they've blown that thing way out of proportion. And as we continue to progress, I'm going to agree. What will that be? What will it look like? Those are conversations that we're moving towards. Next page, please. Now on the needs, additional needs, agriculture, we're out there surveying our community right now. We're, we've been asked, and we've been paid to provide two hundred and fifty interviews throughout Red Blanco County, primarily in our district. About what a firm water supply would work, and say the Cox's ranch, do they have a firm water supply? Are these guys short? Is there new agricultural land that could come about? What type of innovation these people want to do? Do they want to do a new industry out here? I don't know. But we're, we're policing the area, we're doing surveys with flatwater recreation, trying to replace what we lost. And then future hydropower. Is it just Taylor Draw? And what about Wolf Creek? Future hydropower, that's why we left it at that. So Tim, for your question about modeling. It takes all these needs, river hydrology, precipitation, drought, in-stream flows, that's a three-letter nasty word there. Senior water rights, including compact, but I don't call it compact. Environmental flows for the fish and evaporation to equal a firm yield, which will be a volume of water and storage for that reservoir. And then we can figure out based upon the hydrology and all these, how we're going to operate the reservoir. So that we can maintain the water supply that you need down here and all those other beneficially needs that we're trying to make sure have firm supply. And that's way over my head, the modeling. And then the, about one more? Not going to go into that too much. These are just some benefits that we've got. BLM has stated that that's a new destination is what you're building. We've received the USDA congression-directed funding for it, Department of Interior Mission, we're fitting right into there. I mean, we fit so many areas in there, Colorado Water Plan, it's right there. And then recently, you've heard that the White River has been over-appropriated. For folks above Taylor Draw Dam, it's not too big of a deal, but when you don't have an augmentation source of water to replace the, the water that those junior users are taking, it shuts people completely off. And the overappropriation is tied to, there's not enough water within the White River Basin to suffice all the needs. And our division engineer has made that very clear in her public statement last week. There's not enough water, go around.
Who's that?
Their division engineer, Erin Light.
Oh, okay. I wasn't sure if that was her.
She made it very clear. So Jason Almond, who was the division engineer for the state, um, agreed, and they're now progressing through that to get, um. Wells permitted, getting everything on record, and continuing to get diversion or flow measurement devices installed throughout the White River Basin. So. And then the final slide. Is just some photos that, that we've got of the White River, and then a little excerpt down here from March twenty-two, eighteen ninety-four. Talking about that little cabin and its history. So. You can read it for if you need me to, if you would like me to, so. Questions for you. I know I threw a lot at you.
Any questions? Well, you know I got them, Ron.
Hi, man.
I, I pulled up one of the press releases, and I have some concern over it. And it comes, you know, press release from Governor Polis out of the Office of Just Transition. And I read through the quotes here, you know, the industrial park in Craig. Uh, for the train station and stuff, so they're fortunate that they got that there, and I'm really disappointed in our government for going to shut down coal, but. And I'm going to put you on the spot here, Alden. Where you said our economy is transitioning away from fossil fuel. Electric generation and reliable water. Electric generation and reliable water supply is a key component. The first part of that is what concerns me. Who decided that we're going away from fossil fuel electric generation?
State mandates, state laws, federal mandates. They've all been trickled down.
So they made state laws to close our coal mines down?
Yes, to my knowledge, they have.
They might not have been laws, they were mandates. The state was the one that instigated that.
Okay, yeah, I remember that. I remember testifying many years ago over this. I just didn't realize that the state is forcing our economies to shut down, but yet you're, you're putting in here that it's gonna help for natural gas and stuff. What's gonna stop them from shutting that down? Because they've surely shut down oil exploration out here. How is this gonna help us out here in Western Slope if everything's getting shut down? That's a legit question, I think. Because that's our livelihood put out here. Well, the water that we're trying to capture here is colliding with industry out here. They're making it, they're making it finite by saying, we're gonna shut the, we're gonna tell you how many wells you're gonna have operating in your area. By the amount of water, we're gonna allow you to divert to them. What brings in the next question is how in the world did they start pounding the ground out there with ant shoots and run, what is it, thirteen miles of waterline? And we're shutting all this down, and I don't even have time as a council member to try and figure out how we're gonna survive. Because they're taking all this away, so where's our money coming from? This reservoir is not gonna do anything for Ransley, 'cause there's not gonna be any industry here.
Well, you're not gonna have any industry or any ability to future growth over what you have today.
Well, exactly.
Because you don't have any water supply to make it up.
Exactly.
And then you're gonna be at the whim of whatever that river goes dry.
Exactly.
And the only other piece you got there is your water rights and the water rights that we are exercising right now. Our call is the only way that we bring water to our district.
The call that you made out there a couple of years ago.
Sixty-six call, so that's pretty darn good. It's pretty easy for that to fall out, and that don't bring down a whole lot more water, but that's the best that we can do. And we see the injury and ask the meeting. Now, I've also seen the benefit that's had to ranchers and irrigators around their area, because now they got enough water, a little bit more water later on in the season, to maybe get another little crop out there to rain a few more cows out there.
Right.
So I know your job is to look at just Rio Blanco County or Ransley as a whole, but it's mine's out to look at Rio Blanco Water Conservancy District as a whole.
Well, Moffett County's included in this.
Moffett County is, yeah.
Right. So who's looking, who's looking out for Moffett County's interest, Alvin?
Moffett County. I'm not working in Moffett County.
I know, but who's a representative working with you on this?
I do not have a representative working from Moffett County, I do not.
Oh, so then, so then how, why are they gonna benefit from it if they're not got any skin up?
Because they've got some storage in that side, but they're not getting an additional work out of us for them on their side.
Okay.
Okay, I'm not coming to the table to fight for them like I am standing in front of here with you tonight, and then tomorrow I'll be in front of all those federal agencies. I'm not fighting for Moffett County for that. You're gonna be the recipient of the water. They're gonna be the recipient of the recreation. Just what they have access to.
So with these phases you have on page twenty-seven that I have in my booklet here, of phase one, two, three, four, five, six. Of doing the geotechnical bore hole and all that, the test drought stuff. That's not gonna be for naught, is it? What part of the step of your process? How quickly is this gonna draw us closer to a finish line?
We won't do like that step one through four. We won't enact that until we get to a notice of intent. Once the notice of intent is where the feds say, yes, we agreed, we have a plan of development, that reversion tube, and then that's when we go forward.
Where, where?
There's gonna be some field geophysical in, analysis that'll be done, but that doesn't require any geological disturbances.
So there's no timeline on the notice of intent from the feds?
I wish I did.
So that, to me, that just turns it into political.
But every time I turn around, there's a political storm coming at me.
Right.
I've been told what to do one time, and then two weeks later, I'm told to do something else. And that's why these processes take so darn long to work through. And we've been extremely patient and diligent to front load this as much as we can, getting the best information we can from all these federal and state agencies. To be sitting here today where we believe we're on the right path, I've got the people sitting there ready to go. That's where tomorrow, we're looking at, we're recording, we're telling them, um, we're gonna start writing, we're gonna start pulling these documents together. And we're moving forward. 'Cause that's one of the things that they're really good about, is trying to delay and be bureaucratic about it.
Okay, I think we need to wrap this up if at all possible. Any other questions, Tim?
I do, but I'll email or I'll go to their next board meeting.
I, I still do, because I think we're spending a lot of money right here, and I know we spent a lot of money before, but I, I still think that there's. At the end of the day, when I walk down the street and Frank Hewitt steps up to me and he says, you guys just donated two thousand, or two hundred thousand dollars to the water users, how is that gonna benefit Ransley? And that's what, what I need to have the answer from you, so I can explain it to him.
It's gonna give you a firm.
Or I can explain it to, to whoever it may be.
Firm water supply for your town.
Okay.
Firm water supply.
Hold on a second, hold on a second. Firm water supply we have right now?
No, you do not.
We've never been without water.
Yes, you have.
We've been restricted, but we've never been without.
When Alden put calls on the river, it was to keep the river high enough so we could pump out of it through our plant.
That's, that's what I was getting at, thank you.
Two thousand and two, you built a copper dam because you couldn't get water in your intake.
Okay, okay.
Nineteen seventy-seven, Ransley was out. There's other dates that I have as well. So it's to provide you a firm water supply, the ability to sustain your present town.
So then.
But also future growth.
Possibly have storage in Wolf Creek, too.
Yes.
Right.
So the town of Ransley would have storage. So we pump in there, and if we needed a call, if we needed water here in the town. You could provide it out of Wolf Creek, right?
That's right.
Okay.
Yep.
And I think that's what he's trying to get at, is, is how do we answer
Yes, sir.
The, the thing of the cost of the town, and how does it benefit the town? And I think that's what, I, I have the same kinda question, I mean. I'd feel all warm and fuzzy if we said two thousand and forty, this will be done. That's the, then that's where I'm having a problem grasping. I understand we're doing this for future generations, but we're doing this. It's gonna probably be done way past your time.
I hope not.
Well, that's, but I, you can't give me a date, so I'm, I, the way our federal government works, and the last time a reservoir of this type and size has been built, I think has been what? Roosevelt?
No, there's one under construction right now.
Where?
Chimney Hall, on the front slope, Front Range, northern, northern side there.
So they're moving pretty quick on that.
No, that was an eighteen-year process, sixteen.
So how do they get those big ten-foot diversion tunnels in the mountains?
They drill them?
That's not what I was asking. How quickly can they do those?
I understand. But we're not looking at that magnitude of construction for that type of project either, Moffett County.
Right.
So.
Any other questions?
So that's my answer.
And then the other piece is allows your community to grow. Should the present state of affairs in our, in our state keep going towards sequesters our extracted resources? Now you have something else you can build upon, 'cause your agriculture industry can and will feed your town. If they don't have water, you won't even have the agricultural sector over what you have today to keep itself going.
Right.
And at present value, present rate, we've already lost one-third of our agriculture, irrigated agricultural land in Rio Blanco County in the past five years. One-third.
Why?
You tell me, 'cause I don't know. I believe it's drought, 'cause we've had three mega droughts in the, in those five years. And I think these ranchers are just shutting off or reducing their ability to divert water on their ground, because the water's just not there. 'Cause I am seeing fields idle. That trickle down stinks. So.
I think, sorry, the concern from my end is, you know, two hundred thousand is a lot, and there's no guarantee we're gonna see the water. But I understand we need help in order to try to get it. So, I mean, this isn't, this isn't a for-sure deal yet. Everybody understands your passion, they see it. Nobody can say that you have not put any effort into this. I mean, that, that's ridiculous. We, we can obviously tell you, you've put your life into this project. And I, as a taxpayer of this community, really appreciate it, 'cause we need it. But on that same token, there's, there's no guarantee these funds, that, that thing will come to fruition. So I, I hate that, that, that that's a, a factor.
But it's a realistic one. And the other projects that, that I do continue to stay involved with, it's a large partnership. And, and they all have to come to the table. And even some of these smaller water districts out there have to come to the table, and they do what they can, that's all they can. But if they don't, then the water, the applicant or the project proponent has to move on. And we will. I, I, I won't have a choice. I mean, I know what I've been asked to do, but municipal is something we've been doing for quite some time for this, so.
I just have one more, Ron.
Good.
So on your phase one through six, it's basically talking about getting out there and trenching it and drilling test holes and stuff like that. Is that what you're gonna say, that this dam will actually hold water?
No, that's how we construct the dam.
Okay, let's get rid of the dam, 'cause we know the dam's gonna hold the damn water, right? But let's talk about the, the walls on Coal Ridge.
Okay.
Isn't that what you're talking about, the test trenches?
No. The test trench goes, if you can go back, get you backups in there. Of the project plan development? This one. Coal Ridge is right here.
Yep.
Okay, the dam is about fifteen hundred yards north of Coal Ridge. We moved it back. So the trenching and the boring, the excavations would be out of Coal Ridge. There would be no water stored or no water up against Coal Ridge.
Okay.
There might be a little itty-bitty bit down in here, way at the very base, but boy, it ain't buried donggone much, there's a cow tank right down there right now.
So your test trenches and what you're talking about there is to see what you're gonna need in order to construct the dam?
That's correct. It drives design. Just like you would do if you would do a water.
So then, there's, that's a, these dates that you have listed here, they're not really firm dates. You just put there in hopes that in phase one, you're gonna start June, July, twenty twenty-five, phase two, August, September, twenty twenty-five. Those are not legit.
When we developed that, we were running the impression that we would be further along with the feds.
So you're not, you're not doing that?
No, no. If anything, there would be some geophysical, which is not excavations or, or war.
Right, 'cause that talks about that earlier.
That's the moorings, the actual physical, we're gonna hold the ground, wouldn't happen until we get the notice of intent. Which gives it more realistic, that they've agreed to your plan, they've agreed that you need the water, they've agreed to everything, and now you can go ahead. We've always tried to have a plan ahead before we go.
So this is the last one.
That was the last one, two questions.
I know, I told these guys. Two hundred thousand dollars, I think it was two years ago, right, that we, that we, um, gave you guys money? Two hundred thousand dollars, I can explain today what that money would be going to, a physical thing, s- something.
I would go back, I would go back, uh, go forward, please, Maryville. Thank you. A portion of your two hundred thousand dollars would go to pay this. If it's short, we'll make it up. 'Cause that's what I got the USDA money for, that's what I got the Rio Blanco County money for, that's what I got the River District money for. And this is just to make sure you guys are also in the partnership, but you gotta pay the way.
How much do they have, innit?
Who?
Any of those entities?
Rio Blanco County's gave me four million, they're probably about almost five million by now, ah, horn avenue. The River District is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, USDA, which is the congressionally-directed spending, is five. And those funds there that we've all thrown together here, that budget, should get us to a record of decision.
Something sounds like Moffett County's gonna benefit as well if they've been approached?
Yes, and Moffett County has other things that they can offer if we need to. But it's not monetary. They've got a heck of a road and bridge group. And lots of gravel bits.
They build bridges in Rio Blanco County?
I don't know, but I'm sure we can work on agreements and maybe meet in the middle.
So waiting on notice of intent from who again?
The notice of intent would come from Army Corps. If Army Corps says, yeah, we got you, Al, we're good, we're good with this thing. BLM already says, we're ready to go. BLM is ready to go. Army Corps is the, the, the one that's really dragging us down.
Is that the only one you're waiting on?
Army Corps, yep. But that's one level of permitting. Don't forget, you gotta go through the state yet, too. But we're trying to do the state and the federal permitting at the same time. That's why our cooperating agencies, Lisa's part of that, is, I think, Andy, you were as well getting some emails from the cooperating agencies. That's a massive list of people with dot gov behind their name.
Maybe, any more questions?
I think that's it.
You're, I'm always happy to visit with you.
I know, Andy.
Is there anything that we can do? Reach out to Army Corps?
Absolutely, I think there is. I would, I would say.
Send us contact information.
I would say congressional leaders are very important to keep them involved. And, and express to them that it's very important to get straight guidance. 'Cause that's why these projects get mucked down, not just here, but even on the Front Range. It really stinks that you get very little answers. But even if you do call up Army Corps, say, now we gotta get this thing done, what can we do to hurry this thing up, or get, get on, keep streaming? Trump's helping, 'cause now we've got the chip knocked off their shoulder at least. So tomorrow will be a very interesting conversation.
Okay.
Thanks, Alden.
Thank you all for your consideration.
Well, thank you.
And trustees, so.
You ready to take? Yep. We're gonna take a five-minute break.
So Keely picked a bad night to come.
He had very specific things. His students were interviewing and told us, and nobody's here to tell us that. So students were not told. Well, no, I didn't expect that to, but the person. Well, I would say it was.
There's some facts to, you know. I know they did to Maryville, but.
I can speak on behalf of the directors at the River Conservancy. We appreciate all the support.
Well, and to be honest, I knew that.
We, we appreciate the comments that helped us.
What's up? You're too happy about that one. Forty-five. Forty-five. You can wait till fifty, yeah. It's hit forty-five anymore.
I mean, I was understanding Jennifer, but we, she worked.
Saying it's forty-five now. Works to.
What's your experience as a county councilman?
Yeah, shoot me, shoot me now.
This is honestly the longest, man. Besides the one where.
Damn it, Ron, you're innocent.
The police came there.
All I'm here to say is.
That's three million dollars.
Do we do this annually? Do we do this annually?
I can't remember what it was. One year it was a hundred thousand.
Okay, we'll come back. Um, I will entertain a motion on thirteen A.
I make a motion to approve the funds budgeted for Wolf Creek Reservoir, the amount of two hundred thousand to be related to the Rio Blanco Water Conservatory District.
Second.
Okay, the motion is made by Kyle, seconded by Tim. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign?
Abstain.
Motion carries. Thank you again, Al. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Al and Tim.
I'm always available to visit and Lisa's pretty good at pinning me down too, so. No worries.
And it's good to flush these out in public meetings as well.
Absolutely.
So people can see that we, you know, we are concerned about it and we support it.
Our, I get beat up by the River District Board too that I sit on, so, um, and the county commissioners, so don't be afraid.
Well, I don't consider the night a beat up. I, I just trying to get other information.
I don't, I don't mean it that way. That, don't take me wrong there, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alden, I, is there any way that we could get you in here quarterly to just give us a brief summary on? Where our, where our dollars.
Uh huh.
At, are going and what's the progress?
We, absolutely, we can do that.
I don't want you in here every week because we're gonna have this meeting and it's gonna be.
Well, Frank Hewitt, when he was mayor, assigned me an egg timer of two minutes, so.
We can do that too.
Yeah, but absolutely, we, we, we.
Assign him some duct tape.
All right.
Every, every grant I have, all the funding I have has sideboards. Um, and we can absolutely share what we use your dollars for. Um, that, that's all public information anyway, so.
Would you mind coming out?
That wouldn't be a problem. I'd like to get on the same schedule. They're all a little bit different, so quarterly's not a problem. So, yeah.
Water is life, that's what we have.
And we really are very conservative with our dollars. Um, wi- with that, you know, um, but there's gonna come a time to where this next phase, I budgeted two point eight million dollars. Nothing for, nothing but paper and, and computer models. So that, that's really where it's at and, and permitting is one point eight million dollars a year. And we budgeted three years for that. Um, and now I've had to budget an extra few years, but I feel like. We've got a financial roadmap to get us there. Um, but it's gonna take a commitment from everyone that's a partner and it's gonna hurt. But there's great rewards that typically comes with such immense planning efforts like this, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd just like to say that I abstained only because my dad sits on your board.
No, that's.
That's in case you were wondering if I was a candidate or whatever else, I, that's the reason for my abstention.
You're welcome to come visit as well, Sean.
Okay, fourteen A, discussion and action to approve February twenty twenty-five check register.
I had a question for Lisa earlier today. I'll just share real quick. It won't take long. On page thirty-one. The AVTEC expense for the mobile tablets and laptops. The Ri- the Rio Blanco nine one one board, uh, was approached to reallocate some funds they didn't need. For this and I'm fairly certain. The town doesn't have to pay that money. It's gonna be.
And I don't think we received that yet, but I, I know you didn't get a call back from Marloso, but I'll follow up with everybody on that.
Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure because I know we approved it.
And maybe she was also waiting till we submitted the proof of payment, which we just. Probably lacked doing, so that might be on us.
Okay, that's all I had.
Anything else?
Yep. With that, I'll make a motion to approve the February twenty twenty-five check register.
Robbie, is that you?
Yep.
Motion made by Todd, seconded by Robbie. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Finally, what do you? Discussion and ask me to approve a special events permit for CNCC Foundation Dinner on April twelfth, twenty twenty-five.
Good evening. Um, for those who don't know me or don't know me well, I'm Keely Ellis. I'm the executive director of advancement and the foundation at CNCC. Um, and in your packet, you would have had my application plus a letter from Dr. Jones. Um, and her support for the serving of alcohol, which will just consist of beer and wine. There's also a letter in there from me. Um, so if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Would you please clean up afterwards?
I guarantee you she will.
Excuse me, I'm not on camera. Um, so can I add just one thing? It was brought up tonight about IDing folks. How do you determine like a minor versus not? Um, I actually do it the opposite as opposed to putting a wristband on anyone who is of age, but instead putting them on minors. It's a lot easier to identify the five minors in attendance when they have a wristband versus the two hundred in attendance who are of age. And then you have a minor, if that makes sense. So. The wristband stands out on those few versus the hundreds that have them. It's harder to. And in my letter, I, I note that we'll ID anyone over the eight, anyone who looks under thirty. But tonight, based on your comment, Kyle, we can definitely increase that to anyone who looks under the age of fifty. Just to make sure we C Y A. The other thing, sorry, sorry, can I add one more thing? The other thing I wanna add, um, we will serve beer, um, beer out of a keg versus cans. Um, and that also for us seems more protective because that keg will leave that site that night versus. Cans are easier to leave behind and then it'll be bottled wine, so. I'm done, Ron, now.
No, all I was gonna say is I guarantee, we can guarantee it's gonna be cleaned up because I'm the chair of her.
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, the liquor license for the CNCC Foundation, uh, Dinner. Uh, to be held April fourth, twenty twenty-five, uh, with the support of Dr. Jones from the college. And a letter from the chief of police, Ty Hamlin, and support this that there have been no infractions on this. And I concur with Ron, uh, that the foundation dinner is always. It's gonna be cleaned up afterwards because I was involved in it for many years as well.
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Andy. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Thank you, Keely.
Thank you guys so much. One other thing I'll just add, my bartenders will be faculty and staff members for the event as well, so. Thank you for your support. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you for what you do.
Fourteen C, discussion and action to approve the liquor license renewal for Powell Liquor Company.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Todd. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Fourteen D, discussion and action to approve a grant application to JAG in the amount of one hundred ninety-one thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars. For the replacement of two Chevy Tahos fully equipped.
Second.
These are, that's just, to be clear, that's the full, full cost of both vehicles, correct?
And all of the equipment that goes with it.
So motion made by Robbie? Seconded by Sean? Any other discussion?
The grant approval is, or the grant application is just for an application, right?
Yes.
And we're going for the full one ninety-one?
Yes.
Perfect. No more discussion.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Discussion and action to approve a grant application to JAG. In the amount of thirty-three thousand, two hundred and sixteen dollars for sixteen body worn. Body worn cameras that will be equipped with location trackers for the officers to replace the existing models.
Like this one, I'd clarify this because I did ask Brittany after the fact, I said, is that going to instigate a yearly charge? Because of the location trackers and she said initially, they are just going to get the equipment with those. And if the location trackers don't work in our area because of lack of service, they are not going to use them. But if they do, then they will make sure that that is included in their annual budget.
So moved to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Kyle. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Fifteen informational items, CNCC Foundation Dinner, April twelfth, twenty twenty-five. The health care at the hospital is April the sixth?
Fifth.
I'm sorry.
The fifth or the sixth?
I think it's the fifth.
Saturday. Saturday.
Okay. It is?
It's the fifth.
Okay, so April the fifth, starting at seven AM. Uh, scheduled announcements are listed there. Any changes? I doubt since those are all. Anything else for the board today?
Not for me, Ron.
All right, you sure? So we will adjourn at eight forty-one.